Good evening. Welcome to this forum sponsored by the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce. And tonight, we're going to be interviewing and hearing from candidates for Hibbing City Council. We have five of them with us this evening. And maybe just to get started, we'll remind one another of what ward each is running to represent. So we have James Bayless representing Ward 1. Running for Ward 1. Steve Drenas.
Ward 4.
Ward 4. Pat Garrity.
Ward 1.
Ward 1. So Pat and James are running against each other. Justin?
I'm running for the at-large position.
Justin Fasso is running for that large position. His opponent is Mr. Nick Hill, who is not able to be here this evening. And Chris Whitney?
Ward 4.
Ward 4. And so you're running against Steve. Okay. And also on the ballot will be Jay Hildebrand, who is for Ward 2, but he's unopposed and he's not participating tonight. Again, this forum is sponsored by the Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce and it's being broadcast by the Hibbing Public Access Television. And we're grateful again for their participation. I'm Pastor Dan Erickson, and I along with Mr. Steve Potts will be asking the questions tonight. You will each have two minutes to give an opening statement, and then we'll go to our questions. And you'll have 90 seconds to answer each of those questions. We aren't going to have any rebuttal time built in, but you're welcome to save rebuttal for your closing statement, which each will have three minutes for that. Or obviously, you can use your time in answering a following question to go back to something else if that's how you choose to use your time. So we begin with the opening statements, and we'll start with James for this one. Two minutes, just to let us know who you are and why you're running, et cetera.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. So my name is James Bayless. I'm currently sitting in the seat for Ward 1, and I've been there since the 2018 election. This has been an extremely cool experience for me. I ran initially just because I wanted to get more involved with what was happening in Hibbing. I had a lot of complaints and never any solutions. But now I get to be a part of the solutions, and it's been fantastic. I've been in Hibbing since I was a little kid. I'm a local business owner, married, four children. We all live and go to school here and work here, and I'm just excited to be a part of Hibbing's city council. Thanks.
Thank you. Steve?
Hi. I'm Steve Drenas, a proud lifetime member of the Hibbing area. I'm a retired Blue Jacket, retired, or former Hibbing Junior, Hibbing Blue Jacket Cardinal and a graduate of University of Wisconsin Superior. I have a degree in Business Administration, Marketing, and a minor in Accounting. After I graduated from the University of Wisconsin, I was fortunate enough to come back to my hometown and work for 25 years at the Hibbing Tribune as the advertising manager, winning numerous state awards. After that, my true love of cars put me in a position to go work for Ranger GM in Hibbing. I took over their advertising campaign, all their internet sales, and did all the budgets and as well as meeting all the customer needs. My civic involvement currently and past included President of the Hibbing Kiwanis Club, Board Member of the Central Musabi Medical Foundation, and currently I'm serving on the HEITA board, and I'm also representing Ward 4 on Hibbing City Council. Currently, my wife and I are doing volunteer work in Hibbing. And retirement is great. I advise it for anybody. It's a great time. It's given me some time to give back to the city of Hibbing, and I believe that the Hibbing city that I believe in, and I believe in Hibbing and what they've given me, I owe them immensely. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Pat, your opening statement?
First, I'd like to thank the chamber for giving us this opportunity to present our opinions. But I also want to point out right away after, you know, I'm not running against anybody. I'm running to offer my services to the citizens of Hibbing in financial management, knowledge and experience. And so I'm not here as a negative campaign, you know, person. So I just want that clear up front. It's, you know, I've got basically a couple dozen years of experience as the former City Clerk Treasurer with incredible amount of government budgeting and government financing and even HEITA experience as a treasurer for, I think, 15 years. So I have the background and the experience to help the city in this time, which I think is a very critical time. You know, we're on the verge of potentially having Hibbing taconite shutdown in '25 to '27. That's a big deal. That's 700 jobs. And the finances that go along with that, the taconite taxes, the employment, it's a dangerous situation. And we have to be putting all our effort and our staff effort in making sure we do everything we can to keep Hibbing tack here and producing and help them get reserves one way or the other. But I'll go into more later. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, your opening statement?
Thank you. My name is Justin Fasso. I am currently serving as the council member at large. I live in Hibbing with my wife and three kids. I've lived here for the last 18 years. Graduated from Hibbing Community College, and I currently work at Delta Airlines. Really enjoyed my time on the council so far. I think I've truly made a difference. Besides that, I also serve on several boards. I've served as President on the Hibbing Chism Breakfast Rotary for the last two years, part of the Age to Age Board, which brought you Hibbing on Howard this summer, part of Hibbing Public TV's Board, as well as the Blue Jackets Career Academy. So I'm always volunteering and spending time at sporting events and school projects. And really, I'm just running for this position because I truly want to make a difference in the community. I see Hibbing as an amazing city with unlimited potential, and I believe that we can work together. We can work together and create a community that thrives and becomes a destination for families as well as for new businesses. I really believe that my work in the community shows just that I am an ideal candidate for this position. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Chris, your opening statement?
Thanks. My name's Chris Whitney. I'm a almost lifelong Hibbing resident, moved up here when I was a toddler from Ohio, but I've been here and gone to school ever since, lived here, worked here, graduated in '95 from Hibbing High, '99, HCC in the law enforcement program. I've dedicated the last 21 years as a police officer in the city of Kiwatin, our neighboring mining town, and the last six years as chief. My wife and kids live with me in Greenhaven. We all work and they obviously go to school here too. And I'm running for council because, to echo kind of what Pat said, I don't have any axes to grind or not against someone, anything who's currently up here now did. I just feel I have a lot to offer. My track record in as a community leader in Kiwatin as the Chief of Police, all the volunteer work and fundraising I do over there, plus the initiatives to clean up the town with both crime and blight, a couple of my things I'm running on. I have great successes over there with getting Kiwatin cleaned up and getting some blight cleaned up and old structures demolished. And yeah, I just think I have a lot to offer. My kids are going to school here now. We're vested in the community. I want things for them to do, and I want things for other families to do, such as youth activities, opportunities, places to work, places to live, a affordable place to live, and other industries and businesses that thrive. And I would look forward to keeping that happening in Hibbing.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Starting on questions, remember you have 90 seconds to respond, and we'll start with Steve and come back around to James. Steve, what are the top three issues facing Hibbing in the next two years? How should the council address these?
Boy, the next two years? I don't think it will stop in two years, but first of all, it'd probably be public safety, infrastructure, and probably housing are the three that I get mostly off. Brought up to when I'm talking to people, when you get into, let's say, public safety, I'm all for the police department. I just reviewed their reports from May and June, and Hibbing is relatively a real safe place to live. They're making progress on the blight, and I'm in favor for any updates to equipment and training that they may need. I want Hibbing to be a safe place for everyone to visit and to work and to live in. As far as infrastructure, infrastructure is not just the gas lines and the water lines and things that are, you know, maybe not seen as often. It's also your internet and your broadband, and that's going to be one of the things that we have to keep going as far as expanding. Businesses that are looking to locate in Hibbing are going to use our infrastructure as an asset. It's something they won't have to expend out cash for when they want to move into Hibbing. And I guess my time is up.
Thank you. Pat, same question for you. What are your top three priorities facing, that you see facing Hibbing the next two years? And how do you think the council should address these issues?
Okay. It's going to be tough to be that short an answer, but basically, it's jobs and it's taxes and it's infrastructure and it's housing and it's economic development. There's so much that needs to be done. We have to help to maintain the mines. We have to accept the fact in budgeting, you know, we have to accept the fact that, you know, LGA has been being reduced, that's local government aid, for the last eight, nine years. It's up a little bit, but it's less than 2%. The other thing is budgeting, making sure that we have a responsible budget, but one that provides the services that the people need and is affordable. You know, we can't, taxes have gone up about a million and 1.6 million in the last few years. That's not sustainable in a community our size without any major development going on. But getting jobs, you know, when I was on HEITA, in the last 10 years, you know, when I left four years ago and didn't run again, we gave out 70 loans to local, and loans and incentives to local businesses and new businesses to locate here and create jobs. And we also gave about three, over $3 million worth of tax increment, tax abatement, and we got a lot of money from the IRRB and the county in the same, for infrastructure. So thank you. My time's up.
That's fine. Now, I should mention that when Shelley holds the "time's up" card, we expect you to stop as you finish your sentence, but please do not have 17 commas in your sentence. So keep going. So you did a fine job, Pat, quitting there. Justin, the same question for you. What are the top three issues facing Hibbing in the next three years, and how should the council address these?
You know, I think a lot of it has to do with growth, right? So growth of our economy. So how do we develop a better economic plan, right? You know, one of the things that I focused on while on the city council was, you know, making sure that we could get a full-time economic developer on staff. And we did achieve that this year. So to me, that's a big move forward for us. And, you know, for economic development, I think really looking at a plan of, you know, how do we get more businesses? How do we get more people into the city? And I think if we focus on the fact that, yes, we don't have maybe the roads or the traffic like Grand Rapids or Virginia has, but what we are is in the middle of the heart of the Iron Range, and we can draw from both sides. So I think really focusing on a plan that makes us the choice between Virginia and Grand Rapids and really draws the people in for shopping, I think that's where we need to focus for economic development. I think that making a communication plan is also super important. So communicating with our residents, whether it's via social media and the struggle there is with that, or directly through HPAD or the paper, just continuing to really build on the community in that way. And then last, I think the biggest thing we need to focus on is how to make Hibbing a destination city. So how do we, how do we keep that growing? And how do we focus on things like the RC Park and the Bird Station and building a campground? And how do we monopolize or use the mountain bike park to our advantage?
Thank you, Justin. Chris, the same question. What are the top three issues facing Hibbing in the next two years in your mind, and how should the council address these?
Well, the three I think, at least I'm running on, they all kind of tie into each other. Citywide cleanup, attracting new businesses, or selling the city and attracting new businesses. You start by focusing on some of the parts of town that need cleanup, blight, crime, any of that. To me, it's not like we're Detroit, but it needs some attention, and it's, they started and they've gotten work done on that. And that jumps into the next part of selling the city, making the city an attractive place for people to come and live and raise a family and work or start a business or a new industry. Got to get out there more and attract these things. And I want to work with Economic Development and all those boards and coming up with a plan to really get us, Hibbing, out there to attract these businesses in industry is and all, at the same time, taking care of our current businesses and industries and making them thrive while they can and explore every avenue option, every option and every avenue possible to do that. I mean, got to keep the mines going, obviously, but they're not going to be here forever. So for us to survive, we got to get other people in here.
Thank you, Chris. And now, James, to you. What do you see as the top three issues facing Hibbing in the next two years, and how should the council address these?
Thank you. So I think to start, everybody else, I think everybody kind of agrees that economic development is one of those things, but I think that spurs off to the other topics. To me, economic development for us is a challenge in trying to make Hibbing a more developable area by having geographical space to put new businesses, having the amenities and the efficient utilities, property taxes, all of the things that make it possible to own a business and be successful. I think spreading out our tax base would be my priority too, and by, that ties into economic development, by having more commercial and industrial businesses here so that our residents aren't paying all of the tax burden for our levy that we're trying to pay for our city services and things for. And then the third thing on my priority list would be a seat at the table for mining and utility conversations. Pat and I both have the pleasure to serve on the Utility Commission, and I've kind of taken some notes from him on how to be at the table for those conversations. He's done a fantastic job of doing that himself, and I feel honored to be a part of that also. But, you know, getting utility costs down, getting our infrastructure improved and finding ways to evolve that for Hibbing is the direction I think we need to head in.
Okay. Thank you. The next question, and we'll start with you, Pat. And it's about economic development, something that each of you have, I think, mentioned in your answer. It's also something that seems we ask every time we have a forum here. So, and I would say, economic development is a continuing challenges. What type of industries and businesses would you try to attract to Hibbing? And I'm at this, can you give us a new idea that will help with economic development? And is there something that maybe we're trying that's simply not working and we shouldn't do it anymore?
Well, I'd like to point out that, you know, there is no magic to get a new business. You have to find somebody that's willing to put their money at risk, and you have to give them an incentive. As I mentioned before, you know, between 2010 and 2018, we helped 70 businesses with totally different needs, and we give them low-interest loans, we give them TIF, we give them TAF, tax increment, tax abatement, and hooked them up with the IRRB. And I guess the point is, you have to get new jobs and maintain jobs, but they have to be at a livable wage and they have to have benefits. That'll support the hospital and the clinics and the nurses and the doctors, and it also will help Hibbing grow. Right now, you know, the biggest employer is the medical community, and it's something I think we're proud of. I think we did a lot to help them when I was here. But I, there is no magic bullet, but you have to be able to give what's needed to the people that want it. You can't make them come to Hibbing, and you can't tell them this is what we'll give you. You package with deed, you package with IRRB, you package with the county, you package with the city. So it's, everything's independent.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no silver bullet.
Thank you, Pat.
Yep.
Justin, same question about economic development. What type of industries and businesses would you try to attract to Hibbing? And do you have any new ideas of how to do that? Is there something that maybe we're trying that you just don't think is working?
So I think, you know, one of the most important things is to take a look at, you know, what do we leave Hibbing to purchase, right? So if we're leaving Hibbing to purchase RVs, that's an opportunity that we should be looking for. And when we look at opportunities, you know, we look to our neighbors and we say, well, are there RV sellers in Virginia and Grand Rapids? If there's not, then that should be something we should take a look at. So looking at what the needs of Hibbing are, what do we leave for? Because that's what we want. And then taking a look at the grander national scale and say, well, what businesses out there are expanding? And as we took it, take a look at those two lists, that's how you cross-reference and decide that would be a good expansion for Hibbing. What are we missing? So I think that's, that's one of the things that we can do. Also, I think one of the things that we need to do is focus on, I kind of talked about it last time, what the Redhead Mountain Bike Park. So what that does over at Iron World is it brings in a lot of people from a lot of different areas, and we can focus locally to build up the needs of those people coming in. So whether that's places to stay, places to eat, you know, antique shops, sports and stuff like that, those are things that we can build on that we're not really capitalizing now as well. And then speaking of a magic bullet, look at things that we use, right? So we all use ammo. That would be a great industry for us on the Iron Range, factories that bring, make ammo. Not that that's even a possibility, but if I could magically flip a switch, that's what I would do.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. Chris, question, same question for you. As far as economic development, what types of industries and businesses would you try to attract to Hibbing? And do you have any new ideas for doing that? And are there things that we're doing right now that you think are not working?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't turn away any business. I mean, but it would be nice to focus on manufacturing or industry or anything that has good-paying jobs and people that would, okay, I want to move to Hibbing to work at this place. I mean, we all need restaurants, we all need places to buy clothes, we all love to see that kind of stuff. Good-paying jobs besides the mines and healthcare and the meanest standards, I mean, you need more of those, I think. And a good way that I would like to see the Hibbing do that is start developing some of this land that we own. I mean, we're the largest city in the state square mileage-wise. Let's start doing this. Let's give incentives to people to build here, utilize what is out there. I don't know what we have for land, but it's got to be some. And the vacant stores, the vacant properties, they need to go, and we need to, we need to fill them. And kind of like what Justin said, what do we have, what don't we have? I mean, right now, we don't have a lot. So, you know, like I said, I wouldn't turn away anything, but we definitely need more places to eat, more places to shop, more hotels, and any kind of industry or business that has good-paying, good-benefit jobs.
Thank you, Chris. James, same question for you. Economic development, what types of industries and businesses would you try to attract to Hibbing? And you have any new ideas to do that? And are there things we're doing right now that really aren't working?
So, I mean, obviously, I think there's always ways to improve what we're doing. So I mean, I wouldn't necessarily say that some things aren't working, but they need to be developed maybe in a different way. But I'll be the dreamer. Maybe, maybe nobody else has these crazy thoughts like I do. But I, you know, I agree, you know, hotels, restaurants, all of those smaller amenities and community needs that we do have, and I think those are super important. But I think the dreamer in me says, you know, Hibbing was built upon mining industry and large employers, large employers, now it's the medical industry. And I just have this crazy idea about, you know, where everything is headed nationally for us. We're looking to, you know, somehow invoke a carbon-free footprint for utility operations and things like that in the future. And, you know, I see all these hills around Hibbing, and you think about what those are made of. Well, they're, they're made out of these tailings and things like that that contain a huge amount of silica. Silica's all over. That's part of a health issue that we actually do have here that we're not fully addressing, in my opinion, but that's a different topic. But to me, I think we would maybe benefit from using things like those resources that are sitting here as waste and maybe turn those into the glass for solar panels. Those are extremely difficult to get right now with our, you know, with our imports and exports situations that we do have. Maybe we need to figure out how to manufacture something like that here affordably so we don't have to worry about that and getting them from China or wherever else they come from. So that's my dreamer idea anyways for what we could do here.
Thank you. Steve, you're the last one, I guess, on this question. So economic development, what types of industries and businesses would you try to attract to Hibbing? And do you have any new ideas of how to do that? And are there some things that we're doing now that just don't seem to be working?
First of all, I try and keep everything we have, maybe tweak them, get them more productive or run smoothly. And then I would go after, and I saw this on, I think it was on TV this morning, it's called a sunflower. And it actually is a solar panel that blooms and blossoms, and it follows the sun. So when the sun is out, it's tracking the sun and giving, giving the impression that it's a sunflower. A sunflower will track the sun. So this actually tracks the sun. And with all the minerals we have here, we could definitely start manufacturing them right here on the range. The beauty about that is, is when there is no sun, they fold up, protect themselves. So it's something that we should look into. Solar powders is coming. Electric cars are coming. Everything electric is coming. We should be prepared for it. Also, I think that by being prepared for it, we should look into precious metals that are available to us, maybe not right down in Hibbing, but they are available very close to us, and we should be using that also. And as far as getting people to come here, they always have a tendency to tell us when they're coming here. We can't really say, you got to come here. They will tell us, we're going to come. And that's the way it's going to be. It's their money to invest, and I hope to invest it in Hibbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, Justin, you're first on this question. Changing tracks a little bit. Based on your understanding, what do you see as the police and fire departments' major needs? And what do you think the council should do to address them?
You know, for the, for the police and the fire department, I think truly that their biggest need right now, you know, especially with, with the fire department, is a safety building, you know, merging those two under one roof. You know, the fire department that we have from the outside, if you stand back a couple blocks, looks pretty decent, but once you get close, there's a, there's a lot of lipstick on that pig, right? The roof's leaking, the doors aren't big enough for the new trucks that we need to order. It's just not a fire hall that we, that we need. And then apart from that, the police department is in the courthouse, so we're renting some space there. So I think in order to collaborate those two groups and let them work together better, building a safety building where they're both housed under one roof is really, I think, should be our primary focus moving forward. That does a couple different things. It makes them under one roof, so when you need some assistance, it's under, under the same roof. But also, it helps us reduce the budget because now they're sharing one roof, so they're sharing, you know... sharing, you know, any, any charges and fees under that roof. So it's, it's really just, you know, a better way to harmonize those two, two departments.
Thank you, Justin. Chris, same question. Based on your understanding, what do you see as the police and fire departments' major needs and what do you think the council can do to address those?
Explore every way, like Justin said, to get a public safety complex. It's long overdue in this town. I mean, even where the police department is at now, it's kind of funny to think like a little over 20 years ago, they're up here in that old timey place and that fire department is too small, it doesn't meet the needs of them. And through ITRIP, grants, loans, whatever, explore all options to get them on the public safety building that they need. And ties hand in hand with having the right equipment, good equipment, that's, doesn't break the budget. And manpower, I mean, always need, can't have enough. I love, one of the reasons I live in Hibbing is we have a full-time fire department. They're here, they're ready to go 24 hours, they're not volunteers, God bless them. But I love the security of that. And you got to keep getting good people in here working and that means paying them a fair and honest wage with good benefits and making sure they're fully staffed. And that's, I'd like to see, like, God, I want to come work for Hibbing Fire, I want to come work for Hibbing Police Department, not, not the high turnover rate that it seems to have in the last decade or so. People move on to somewhere else, but I think that's the key. Build it, they will come. Good, good equipment facility, have, have enough troops. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. James, you same question. Based on your understanding, what do you see as the major needs for the police and fire departments? And how do you think the council can address those?
Thank you. So I, I mean, this will be the echo chamber, I think, with the public safety building for some of us, but it's something that we've talked about on the council level already and we're working towards that. You know, I think the important pieces to that, like Council Fosso had, had mentioned, you know, we were renting space from the county for the police department right now. The fire department has a building that we literally have to special order fire engines because we can't get them through the doors. They're not able to come around that building and drive through. So this, it's, it's a very important need and there's a million reasons why. Aside from that, I, I think I'd like to see the ability for ambulance staffing to be increased with the fire department especially. We don't have a lot of, a lot of income streams for those, that department, and that is one of them, is being able to do transfers. My wife, working at the hospital here in town, has mentioned many, many times that we just need to staff more people. We can't get patients to delude fast enough. There's a lot of sick people and we don't have the, the capability to get them all where they need to go all the time. And one other thing about the police department, you know, I think we've right-sized the police department wages. So I think we've kind of, we've taken that challenge over the first three years that I've been here and we, you know, we, we've, we've made the wages better and more attractive for people to come here and stay as police officers in Hibbing. So I think we need to continue to do that and make sure that they're paid accordingly so we can, we can keep them in our community.
Thank you, James. Steve, same question. Based on your understanding, what do you see as the police and fire departments' major needs and how should the council address those?
Well, I'll probably sound like a broken record, but I, I agree. It's, it's the building. We, we have to house both the Hibbing police and the Hibbing fire department, the ambulance service, all under one roof so that when a call comes in, they can all respond at the same time. Building is inadequate, the fire department, as you mentioned, you can't get the trucks in, you have to pack them in instead of drive-through. You're limited as to the size truck that you can actually get in there. As far as the police department, just a broken record again, we're paying rent to St. Louis County. That rent could be applied to other things. I think the police and the fire department deserves to have everything of their, all of their equipment updated so that it is the most current. I believe they should have the best training, whether it's bringing in specialists or sending them to specialized schools or training centers. They should have the best because they take care of us. And to reiterate the fact that we have a completely paid fire department lets us all sleep a little better at night, and I'm all for it. And I think the, the police and the fire department are doing a great job in Hibbing. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Pat, same question for you. Based on your understanding, what do you see as the police and fire departments' major needs and how should the council work to meet those?
Well, I would hope that, that they had, I think they had it on the priority for bonding to get a combined building. And that's important. I believe, I agree with everybody else that, you know, you have to have a facility that, that the trucks will fit in, the people will fit in. Anytime there's an ambulance in a, in a fire truck, they go together, you know, whether they're coming from a different building or not presently. And just think how, how more efficient it would be if they were all coming out of the same building. So it's, it's something that the seniors need and they want, the kids, they need it and they want it. And it's something that, it's no good in five minutes, you know? It needs to be, the service has to be provided almost immediately. And I agree with James about the fact that, you know, there's a shortage of, of specialized people, but you know, that can be changed. I think that's something that we, we need to talk to, like on the ambulance, for example. We need to talk about, to the unions and, and potentially check on the legal requirements to allow a nurse to be hired to go with a transport. That frees up one employee. On the police side, the police have to combine efforts and work even harder with the, give them unique equipment, but then also make them combine with Chisholm and Nashwakewatt. Thank you, my time's up.
Thank you, Pat. And now I yield to Mr. Steve Potts for the next question.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you, Pastor Dan. I believe, Chris, you're up first this time. How should the planned expansion of the memorial building be funded?
In a smart and, uh, lost for words here. That's the first. With the taxpayer in mind, smart, budget-friendly, fiscally responsible, that's what it is. Fiscally responsible way. And it's, it, it's something that might even want to be put up to, to the citizens and invoked on a referendum or something on the ballot, whether if we're, if we're going to ask for taxpayer money for this or ask the citizens to foot part of the bill. I know I, as a taxpayer, would want to voice, so it's, it's something I think that needs to happen so we can compete, but we don't want to go down the, down into the red and really break the bank this. So it's, loans, grants, ITRIP, a bare minimum, whatever that is, should be put on the shoulders of the taxpayers. So I'm hoping that it can be, a lot of the funds can be raised without having to put it on the public. But if it is, I think they should have a voice in it if, if they want to do that or not.
Okay, thank you. James, same question. How should the planned expansion of the memorial building be funded?
It's a good question, actually, and I think we, Chris might have been caught off-guard by the, the abruptness of the question because it was, it's, it's a good one. But, you know, the memorial building right now, and, and as far as I'm concerned, isn't necessarily a planned expense. We have a concept of what we'd like to do there. We don't necessarily have council action on, on a memorial building expansion. So, I mean, right now, the, the possibilities are endless. I mean, we do have people working towards this, but it's not necessarily that the city's staff is working on a project to expand the memorial building currently. Ways to fund it, obviously the IRRB we would hope would be involved. There are a lot of private investors that have been asked already to potentially pledge money to the project. I know there has been some money pledged already, that if the project does take place, that people have already offered a sum of money to, to invest. Maybe an unpopular way to do it has been talked about as a sales tax. I understand that's a regressive tax. The one benefit to that is it makes it that so not every dollar that we charge with that tax comes out of a Hibbing pocket. You know, visitors come into town, they spend money here, they come in for hockey tournaments, you know, whatever it is. And those dollars, when they spend money in our community, that sales tax will help fund that project without, without having to take every dollar from our taxpayers here. So there, there's a lot of different ways we could try to fund it. I, I'm confident that we'll find, find the best ways that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Steve, the same question. How should the planned expansion of the memorial building be funded?
It's an interesting question because when I came on, when I was appointed to the council, it was kind of a project that had been already started and I expressed concern about the way it was started. I don't think it was transparent enough for the residents of Hibbing. I think it, whatever they do, I'll be for it. But I think what they should do is bring it out into the public so that it is transparent. The taxes should not be put on the burden of the Hibbing residents. Any monies that would be spent should be well-known to all residents, whether it's through a vote or a town meetings or however we, we have to do it, it has to be done. I think the development of the memorial building has got some steps to take. I think the current building should be brought up to current standards as far as safety. And I think that after all that is looked at, maybe there is something that we could do to encourage private sectors or IRRB or grants or whatever to invest in it. And, you know, maybe that's something that would become a destination point for Hibbing. But the way it's done now should be more transparent to the taxpayers and they should have a voice in what, what's going to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the same question. How should the planned expansion of the memorial building be funded?
Okay, as, as James said, it's not an approved project at this point. And I guess I have to point out that in the last five years that I was on the council through 18, we spent seven to nine million dollars renovating the interior of the, the memorial building using IRRB grants, using tac and I tax money and any combination of capital funds. And it was well-planned, it was set out over a five-year period. We did the work, we put in all new inside improvements for, for the air, for safety, for disability, for keeping girls away from guys. And we built about seven new lockers on the, on the west side and with the handicap accessible, you know, entrance for, over there. So I think we did a lot of work inside. The interior's in good shape. And if, if there's going to be a plan in the future, it needs to be well-thought-out. The people need to know what they're, they're getting, how they're going to pay for it. It's probably going to have to be sales tax and grants, but it can't be on the, the tax for the levy. It's just not something that the seniors can afford. And, okay, but I guess my time is up, but I'll come back later.
Justin, the same question. How should the planned expansion of the memorial building be funded?
You know, I think, like everybody said, you start with a, you know, a community plan, get everybody's input on what they really need from that exact project, right? What do we need to see at the center of our community? What are our needs? And then from there, you build on it. So if, when it comes to funding, right? So, so working with the IRRB for grants, seeking other grants that are out there, donations from private entities, and then couple all those with asking for some state bonding money or, or working with the state to get that. I think those are some great ways to raise funds and, and really make a difference in the community. Sales tax, that's a, you know, I'm not 100% sold on that, but the one thing I like about that is then when people come to our town, they're helping pay instead of putting all of the burden on us. As a larger project, I see, you know, kind of like what Pat was saying, you know, there's things inside that need to be done and really just phasing out the project. So things like getting the little theater redone, soundproofing the auditor, the inside of the, the main, main building there, you know, existing infrastructure, getting the curling club up to date, the senior center, just cafeteria upgrades. Those are things that we can do on a regular basis and that's part of the project. So if we can phase through one thing at a time, once we have a plan, then it puts less cost and it spreads it out over time. And I think that's truly the way to go.
Okay, thank you. Next question, James, you get this one first. If the city requires additional funds to operate, what should the funding sources be? Would you support a tax increase?
Well, I mean, I guess I have no option but to be really honest about that and say that I, I, I believe we don't have a choice but to have some sort of a tax levy increase in, in the position we're in right now. In fact, last, the last budget session that we went through didn't feel great. We, we had to raise taxes a little bit higher than we wanted to. I mean, I believe our tax levy was six, a little over 6% last, last time. It didn't feel good and, and I don't think we ever want to do that, but especially now, we're in a bit of an adjustment period, I think. So I think the levy, you know, in our, in our taxes and specifically the property taxes is the main question. I think they are going to go up, but I think it's a twofold problem. So the levy need for the city is that we have a lot of things that we're trying to provide for our community and the cost of all of those things, the goods and services, has increased immensely over the last 24 months. We're going to have to fight that by trying to cut things out of the budget. We can't cut everything out, so we do have to find more money somewhere. So, you know, I, I do believe that it's necessary to have a small tax increase. I'm hoping that there's an offset because of the, the housing market right now and, and how overvalued things are on paper. Our percentage increase from last year might have actually provided more of a benefit than we expected. And maybe we can offset next year's budget with some of those extra dollars, which we've already started to do in this budget session, is take some money from last year and apply it to the next budget year.
Thank you. Steve, the same question. If the city requires additional funds to operate, what should be funding sources and would you support a tax increase?
First of all, this is really new to me. This is the first budget that I've gone through with the city. It's, it's an eye-opening experience. I, I would not, I, I do not, um, how do I want to say this without? I don't, I don't want a tax increase, but it is inevitable. The people in Hibbing are taxed enough. They want the services and unfortunately, to get all the services that the size of Hibbing needs, there's going to have to be a tax increase. I'm, I'm not really for it, but I, I want to commend the department heads and everybody that has worked on the budget. I was totally impressed. They have found ways of taking things that they need for next year. And if they had a little surplus this year, they would try and get them into the budget this year and spend the money this year, not putting the tax burden on the payers, taxpayers for next year. So it's kind of a rough road to follow. But if, if you want, if you want the services, you have to pay for them and you have to pick out between what you want. If you want just regular amenities or if you want necessities. So, you know, geez, it'd be nice to have paved alleys. Well, do we really need them? No, but we need, we need something else that's maybe more necessity, more of a necessity than an amenity. So we have to look at that and, and, and the bottom line is we're going to have a little tax increase and we'll just have to see how that all turns out. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat, the same question. If the city requires additional funds to operate, what should be the funding sources and would you support a tax increase?
Yes. And I guess I've proven that over the years. When, when the, the, the projects and the costs are, were needed, we raised taxes. But you know, I think the big difference was in, in as time has changed, just because of the way people are, is they need to be explained. And in my former position, I would sit at every meeting at the end of December and explain, this is what we need under truth and taxation, and this is why we need it, and this is how we're going to pay for it. And it was never a straight-up tax levy only. I mean, there was always a combination that made sense. And so when you explain to the public why it's happening, they're not always happy about it, but they understand.
about it, but they understand and they accept it. You know, I never got called up and yelled at, you know, in that time period. It was just, the needs were there and they said, hey, yeah, I want high-quality police and fire. I want, you know, protection for the kids, having two police officers at the, at the school. So you raise taxes when you have to, to make that happen. And, but on the other side, you make the department heads squeeze their budgets down instead of giving a 1.2 million reservation like the council did this year to them to just spend and then add to it. I'll get back to that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin, same question. If the city requires additional funds to operate, what should be the funding sources and would you support a tax increase?
Um, yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, first and foremost, being proactive when it comes to the budget, so not reactive. Thinking outside the box and really challenging the department heads to, you know, cut the fluff out of the budget and just look for opportunities. So, you know, if you need a new cart at the park, maybe we can get away with a four-wheeler instead because it's more cost-effective, looking at those options and really cutting those out. You know, looking for, you know, creating a long-term capital plan. So we're not surprised and we're really looking at the future and making the budget, you know, years out so we know what it's going to take. You know, unfortunately, the thing is, everything gets more expensive. So the fire trucks today are never going to be this cheap again, right? So if we don't buy one today, if we buy it in three years, it's more expensive. It is going to cost more money. So every year, the levy is going to have to go up a little bit. But I think if we can focus on, you know, increasing and building up our tax base with commercial and more residential buildings, that helps carry some of that burden. So new houses, new buildings, all of those are taxed that add to our bottom line. So that's what I would do.
All right, thank you. And Chris, you get the last word on this question. If the city requires additional funds to operate, what should be the funding sources and would you support a tax increase?
As a last resort, yes, I think raising taxes in everybody's mind is the last resort, but it needs to be done. You go through your budgets. I run a tight budget, too. When I talk about tight budgets, go to the city Kewattin. We don't have a lot to work with and you got to make every dollar count. You can't waste anything, anything, whether it's the street department, the fire department, the police department, city clerk's office, whatever. Cut everything out you don't need, run a tight ship with your budget, and then goes back to getting more people and businesses here, increase the tax base. Hopefully you can do that. But in the end of the day, we all want firefighters, we all want police officers, we want some new streets occasionally, so they haven't found the money tree yet, so sometimes that does have to happen. And I'm a taxpayer too, but I want all those things. So if I deem it as a necessity, then yeah, then sometimes it's a necessary evil. You got to pay for it somehow. That's, yeah, I would support it when needed.
Thank you. Steve, you get this question first. Attracting qualified people to serve on city commissions and boards remains a challenge. What can the council do to solve this problem?
You know, that's always been a problem and the biggest problem, I think, is the negativity end of it. People are really quick to jump and say, boy, that's a terrible thing they're doing. You know, why don't they not be so negative? Put their, put their expertise maybe to a board. There's boards that are, that are short-staffed right now. Luckily, I'm on a heat-a-board, that staff is, that board is full. But there are some, the library could use some. There's a lot of boards in Hibbing that could be benefited by people that are negative and complaining all the time. So what you got to do is you take your negativity and you turn it into a positive side and their voice, their voice can be something that could work for them. I mean, maybe they, maybe they have a good idea. Maybe they're not just rattling off at the mouth with no justice behind them. If they sat down and they had a conversation with other board members, maybe they can work something out and say, geez, that's not a bad idea. Why don't we try this? So I guess the naysayers could be the yaysayers if they just put their mind to it and their attitude to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Pat, the same question. Attracting qualified people to serve on city commissions and boards remains a challenge. What can the council do to solve this problem?
Well, it's not only people being on cities and boards, but it's also volunteering with the community. You know, there's so many, I don't think people realize how many volunteers there are out there doing different projects. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm on, I've been a volunteer at the bus museum for 25, 30 years. And, you know, it's harder and harder every year to get more volunteers. It's hard to get people on boards because some people have requests that just don't make sense. And they'll call up the people at home and they'll yell at them and, you know, and, you know, these people didn't take that job to be yelled at, you know? And then it gets back to staff has to help present things in a positive way. You know, it's one of the biggest problems with some of the negative feelings in town, in my opinion, could be taken care of very simply. You know, there's a blight problem. There's too much garbage in people's yards. You know, you turn it over to the police, you work with the blight workers, but then you go back to, we used to have a garbage truck go around once a year and haul the garbage away and to the landfill and it costs 25, 30,000. And yeah, it costs money, but it paid off for people saying positive things about the community instead of continuing saying negative things. And I guess I have to quit, sorry.
Justin, same question. Attracting qualified people to serve on city commissions and boards remains a challenge. What can the council do to solve this problem?
Yeah, I think, you know, continue to get the word out, whether it's, you know, via the paper, via social media, and just really focus on how those boards can truly make a difference in the community. And I know the question says, you know, competent, you know, you don't, all you need to do is be a citizen to be on most of these boards. You know, having some job knowledge is a plus, but when it comes to parks and rec or, you know, library boards or, you know, human rights committee, these are just boards that anyone can help with. You don't need a background in them. And I think that's important to get out. You know, for me, one of the things that I did just before pre-COVID was we, I started a junior city council where I invited the ninth to 10th graders over from the high school over here. And really the goal behind that was to give the youth a voice in our community. And I think that's super important as well, is how do you get people on the boards if they're not familiar with local government? And something like a junior city council, that gets the kids in here and then gets them on the right direction. So then 10 years down the road, they'll say, hey, maybe I should be more active. Or maybe they'll just continue to be active. And I think, you know, that's one of the things that we can do. And then just getting them involved in other things, like when it comes to election day and we need kids to help out at polling stations. Great, bring them in, let them see what it's all about. So that's how we get kids, you know, get the community going.
Thank you. And Chris, attracting qualified people to serve on city commissions and boards remains a challenge. What can the council do to solve this problem?
You got to sell it more. I mean, let's face it, as the generations go by, the younger generations, I mean, newspapers and nobody reads them anymore. They got to, you got to be able to sell it more. And probably half the younger people out there don't even know these boards exist. I mean, you got, you like to see something done different with the police department? Okay, there's a police commission, you know about that? Or is there something that the library, you want to get on there? Oh, there's a board for that? Yeah. Sell it. I mean, a lot of people don't know about it. And make it a, make people want to be involved. Get involved. Make your, instead of just complaining on Facebook. I mean, you got to make it, hey, you want, you love the city, you live here, be involved, be a part, know how the city works, know how government works. Then you'll be more, more involved is more informed. I mean, then you'll kind of, besides just running mouth or reading gossip, then no, this is how it actually works. So you get people to know that these positions are out there, get it out there more, the people will come. I mean, the blight initiative we took in Kewattin this spring, I mean, the, some very enthusiastic city councillors over there spearheaded the project, I was involved, got the word out, people came, we ran around town with our own trucks and trailers and hauled garbage for a week and it was a huge success. So just got to sell it.
Okay, thank you. And James, you get the last word on this. Attracting qualified people to serve on city commissions and boards remains a challenge. What can the council do to solve this problem?
So I think it starts with the council members, for one, having a positive view on those boards and commissions. You know, I mean, we've, we've got a number of openings right now and we always sit here and we scratch our heads and say we can't, we can't fill the positions. Well, you know, people like councillor Fossa who went ahead and thought long-term and said, I'm going to get kids involved at a high school level so they know what this is like, they're not afraid of it. It's not a, it's not a daunting thing to walk into because they've been a part of it. I think that's really, really important for the long-term viability of boards and commissions for our city especially. But I think people like ourselves finding peers, you know, people that are passionate, finding individuals that like to champion projects and ideas and maybe us offering them as a city the support that they need to flourish in that role. I don't know what that looks like. We've talked about compensations for positions, you know, there, again, there's no silver bullet to many of these problems, but I think offering support to people that are passionate and care about the community is the best thing we can do.
Okay, thank you. Turn us back over to Pastor Dan.
Pat, you're first on this one. How can the city council address and control the city's legacy costs? Pensions, health insurance, all the retiree things involved?
Well, the city has been working, excuse me, to change contracts, you know, year after year, or not every year, but I mean, as many years as possible, trying to reduce the number of days off, the payouts, the vacation payouts, the medical benefits. They're now down, I mean, they used to be very expensive, Blue Cross, they're now down to just a Medicare supplement, you know? So I mean, there's been a lot of activity there, but it has to be negotiated and it has to be continued. You know, the, the city can set, and the PUC is the same way, they can set, okay, effective next January or effective January of the following year. Any new employee will not get that. And that's, that's what's been going on for the last 10 years and it has to continue. And it's a hard thing to do, but it's got to be even looked at that, well, it's your last 15 or 20 years of employment as compared to your just 15 years of employment. And, you know, those kind of things need to be debunked and, and people are reasonable because it's single-only and it's also, you know, they have to pay the taxes and that's, believe me, I had a fireman call me up and yell at me, taxes are going up and, and I said, but it's paying for your, your benefits. I'm sorry. But it was, you know, he said, forget about it. We're using taxes.
Thank you. Justin, same question for you. How can the city council address and manage the city's legacy costs? Pensions, health insurance, retiree costs, et cetera?
Right. Well, obviously, it's, it's super important that anything that we've, anything that we've promised to retirees, they get, right? So when it comes to pension, retirement, health, anything that they've had while they were working, it is important that they get those benefits. And then on top of that, it's important that we fund those as much as we can. So, you know, there's guidelines on how much you're supposed to fund and the city's been doing a great job of putting additional funds to that every year to make sure that that number's climbing so we're not behind an eight ball, which I think is, is the way that we need to work for it. So making smart choices when we look at the long range of, of how the pensions work, how the, how the healthcare works and, you know, how many days off are allowed to be paid out and those type of things. You know, one of the things that, that I looked at from, from the first time I got onto the council with the budget was, you know, just how much medical costs even the council could incur on the budget. And I've pushed for that since, since I first got on. And going forward with this next year, we have removed that medical benefit for new councillors. So there will no longer be a medical option and that will help stabilize the budget and actually save the city a lot of money.
Thank you, Justin. Chris, same question to you. How can the city council address and manage the city's legacy costs? Pensions, health insurance, retiree costs, et cetera?
It's a tricky subject and, I mean, I know I'm a union guy and we keep new contracts every three years in Kewattin and healthcare has gone through the roof and it's a squeeze on smaller cities. And we've changed, like, we're not Blue Cross anymore. We always shop around, we'll take the best deal and as long as you provide good, affordable medical coverage, excuse me, that's, you just got to keep doing that without taking too much, if anything, away from the employees and like, I think Justin said that, I mean, I started 21 years ago and I, if something I was promised 21 years ago gets taken away with four years left, I'm going to be mad. So, I mean, you can phase stuff out, you can see what's acceptable to the employees and the union members and just have an open dialogue with them, like, hey, guys, this is what this stuff costs. We got to figure something out here and get this under control. And it's, I mean, it used to be we didn't pay anything for our insurance, then now it's 90-10, I suppose 80-20. I mean, sometimes that stuff you got to do. I mean, it's just like taxes. I mean, you want to, you don't want people to lay off, get laid off, you don't want jobs to disappear. So sometimes we got to chip in a little bit more and you got to explore all those ways with cuts like that and so on. So yeah, just exploring the costs, weighing every option you can.
Thank you, Chris. James, same question for you, as far as how the city council can address the legacy costs and manage those costs, pensions, health insurance?
Yeah, so it's, it's a, it's a good question and I don't know that there's a, that there's one specific answer. I think, I think legacy costs in general are things that we're just going to have to be patient with. You know, we are, like, you know, like Pat said, we've sunsetted a lot of the things that were extra language in contracts over the years and that's been to a benefit of the taxpayers in the city. I mean, I think that, I think it's been working. We also have to be cognizant of the fact that the medical portion of those has been the biggest factor, you know? And trying to constantly negotiate a better rate for medical insurance gets to be a pretty, a pretty daunting task. I will say that we've, we've had a pretty decent claims rate, you know, for the user group at the city. It's not the same for like down at the utility, that's a really high user group because of the work that they do. But trying to maybe educate our, you know, our people, you know, the retirees on how the systems are working, what's best for everybody collectively. I think everybody wants their neighbor to survive also. So I think maybe making really mindful decisions about the, the cost of the plans, the makeup of the plans and how we can all save each other some money in the process is key.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Steve, same question for you. What can the city council do to address and manage the city's legacy costs? Pensions, health insurance, retiree benefits?
First of all, I think we should educate any employer, any employee that would like to work for the city, whether it's PUC or the city itself. Let them know exactly what their, what their benefits will be when they start halfway through when they end. And once we establish those goals for them, we have to live up to them. There are some ways, we have to, if we educate them and let them know that, you know, geez, I got, I got a bad toenail today, I think I got to go to the clinic, you know? Just sit back, take care of it yourself, maybe, don't get the claim in. Try to keep your rates low. Explain to them that every time they do something like that, it costs them money. Another thing we could do, we could do a little shopping. I know it's very hard because, you know, you have Blue Cross, Blue Shield, you have Humana, you have whatever else you have out there, but you do have to do the shopping and pick the best.
do have to do the shopping and pick the best, the best bang for your buck. And I think if we do all that, the employee, the employees will respect the employer and possibly work with the employer to keep the costs down. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Steve. Justin, you are first on this question. What should the council do, if anything, to seek to revitalize Hibbing's downtown?
That's a great question. You know, if you look at our downtown, we do have a lot of businesses that have kind of relocated and really focused on moving back in. So when you look at our downtown, yes, we do have some buildings that need to be torn down. So I think that's one thing that we need to look at, is how do we move forward on those type of buildings? I think of like, the Ace Hardware Building, or, you know, that whole half of that block there, be a great, great spot for redevelopment. But really just continuing to focus on things like, you know, we could use a downtown green space, or we could use a downtown pocket park. And how does that draw people in? And how do we make sure that we have enough open storefronts? Because if, besides the few buildings that need to be torn down, a lot of our storefronts are full, or not, not for sale, or not vacant. So it is kind of, kind of a difficult thing. Also, you know, like, this summer, I was part of the Age to Age group, and we put on the Hibbing on Howard. So just drawing people in to our downtown helps revitalize it. And I think, you know, that's another thing, is, is really just focusing on it like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Chris, same question. What might the city council do to seek to revitalize downtown?
Well, I would say, I would, I was in here, I would wanna go to every person that owns a vacant building and see what the scoop is. What are you doing? What's gonna happen? You got any plans with this? And the ones that are tax forfeit, or are city-owned, or if there are any, I mean, redevelop, tear down, redevelop, like, the space between the one side of Mike's Pub that burnt, like, be a great place for a pocket park or something like that. I wanted to get bands downtown, and just, and Age to Age, I went there with my kids, awesome, awesome, we need more stuff like that. I mean, when I was a kid, I remember Hoops on Howard, and Mines and Pines was way different back then, and whatever, if it's still called that now, Jubilee and everything, just getting people to come downtown. I mean, it's harder when the world we live in takes away retail businesses, we see them close, gone, whatever, because of the internet and all that. But kind of refocus our attention and what to do with these spaces. Can it be stores? Can it be redeveloped? Can it be parking? Can it be parks? Something to get just people downtown, because like, the days of browsing malls and window shopping, the department store, and kind of almost gone the way of the dodo. So gotta be more proactive and think outside the box to get people down.
Okay, thank you. James, question for you. What might the city council do, if anything, to seek to revi- to revitalize downtown?
Yeah, so I think the council in general has already taken some steps to do that. You know, we mentioned earlier that we've hired a new economic developer. That position is not exactly that, it's a community development director, I think. And, and she's been doing a really good job, and I think her focus is around revitalizing downtown, and we're trying to figure out how to offer resources and channels of movement to the people that own these buildings that are vacant. You know, I mean, even the ones across the, you know, across the alley from City Hall here. You know, we, we've been talking as a city to those building owners already, trying to figure out what the next steps are, working with the utility in the city. I know they've been coming and asking to, you know, to give some relief on, you know, on taxes or utility, you know, levies that they owe, things like that, that we can do to help those, those buildings move forward. You know, the important thing, I think, is getting these buildings off of the tax burden list and getting them back on the tax rolls. So productive businesses, anything that can create more economic positivity in our downtown is gonna be what I, what I would be looking for out of these buildings. I like pocket parks, just like the next person does. Pocket parks don't pay property taxes, though. So I'd like to see combinations, you know what I mean? Maybe figure out some, some way to get them back on the tax rolls, because that's really what is hurting the downtown the most, I think.
Thank you, James. Steve, same question. What might the city council do to seek to revitalize the downtown?
I would like to see a lot of these empty buildings or burnt out buildings demolished, and have them redeveloped into, they don't have to be huge buildings, but something that can be used for retail. If you look at Red Wing, Minnesota, or Excelsior, Minnesota, their downtowns were totally gone, and now they are thriving. They, they're just thriving like crazy. The reason why is they brought specialty shops, mom and pop specialty shops. So, yeah, you might have an antique store, well, we got antique store. Well, you might have a candle making shop, well, we got that too. But there, there are destination stores. And another prime example, you go up to, to Harbors, that's another place where, you know, they got strange stores, but people go up there just to buy stuff. Pocket parks are nice, they don't pay rent, they don't, they don't bring in any per se income directly, it's indirect income. I would, I would really like to see the downtown revitalized by first filling empty buildings, and then demolishing the ones that, that can't be fixed or used to a progressive member matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Pat, same question. What might the city council do to seek to revitalize the downtown?
Excuse me, thank you. I guess, there's a lot of things that can be done. But some of the things that'll draw in money and make it affordable is, they can create a development district down there that's a renovation for all, you know, they have to set a, a pattern of so many blocks, and people there can, it's a TIF district. And it's, the taxes that are created there will stay there to help the people to, to make improvements to their buildings, make new businesses. Eventually, the taxpayer will get that money in the future, but it gives the incentive to the, the business owner right off the bat, you know, that's, their taxes they're paying, they get half of it back, or 90% back, whatever. Another thing is, HEDA has a right, and HEDA's a powerful organization, it has a right to own property, and it can buy property, it can lease property, and lease purchase, and it can sublet property out to businesses. So it's like a, a bunch of little businesses sharing one building. And then also, there's, you know, there's talk about pocket parks. Well, the city's got some little property on Howard, and first, they can go in and put some, some grass, what's it called, grass for cleaning it up and making it look nicer, and maintain it.
Thank you. We have time for one more question. Do you have a question you'd like to ask, Mr. Potts? Okay, I will finish this then. And you can, Justin, I believe you're first, right?
I just went.
Chris is first.
Me.
Chris is first, okay, all right. What city services do we currently share with neighboring communities, and what additional services might be shared?
Well, we currently, like I know from working again, go back to Kiwatin, like, our fire department in Kiwatin responds to every, they get paged out for every Hibbing fire. And they usually, it's at 1:00 in the morning, they get out of bed, respond, and by the time they get to Kelly Lake, they get called off. So we do stuff already like that. There's a joint task force, we work with the police department. As far as, I mean, what other city services you could share, I guess I would have to explore that more, and you share garbage, or plowing, or, or you combine with the county, and if we already do, I don't know 100% of that, so I couldn't offer that. But there, we already do share some, so I'm sure if there's ways to explore different departments that I'm not fully versed in knowledge of, if it's, it's a benefit there, and there's a way to do it, it probably could and should be done.
Okay, thank you, Chris. James, question for you about city services that are currently shared with neighboring communities, and I guess you have the, some of you are on the council, and what additional services might be shared?
Yeah, so that's a really tough question. I think Chris hit on, on pretty much the, the gist of what we do share already. I think the majority of that is gonna be fire and ambulance, especially there is a lot of neighboring communities, Nashua, Kiwatin, Chisholm, they have basic life ambulances, and we have ALS rigs, and we can, we can meet up with them and, and share services that way. That's, that happens every day between the communities, and that's, it's really nice to see everybody work together. Fire is one of those crazy ones where, if there's a fire, it, it's everybody. I mean, everybody responds, and it's not just Hibbing to Chisholm, or Hibbing to Kiwatin. I mean, you get Rapids, Virginia, I mean, they all come when there's a big fire. That's fantastic. Some of the shared services that we used to share, that we don't anymore, is the city lockup. Hibbing, just, there, there's been an issue with that, I don't know what the deal was. Pat might know a lot more about the history of that, but, you know, we used to have a lockup where we could bring people for, you know, weekend, overnight, whatever. And that was supposed to be a shared, a shared thing with, with other communities, and I just don't think it was ever shared. I think we just paid. So I don't really know what else we could share that we're not now, other than maybe extending some, you know, some resources, or, I mean, maybe utility sharing later. I mean, it's not really a city service, it's a different industry, but I think that would maybe be another way to collaborate with local communities.
Okay, thank you, James. Steve, same question. In your understanding, what city services do we currently share with neighboring communities, and what additional services might be shared?
Another broken record, the fire department and police department is what we're sharing, currently sharing with other communities. And if there is a fire, everybody comes to it, which is great. It's, it's something that kind of eases your mind a little bit. I don't know what we could share, maybe landfills, maybe garbage pickup on highways, I don't know. Whatever we can do to, to help serve, especially the outlying areas of Hibbing, and to, and to give them maybe better services, is something we should look at. If we can team up with Chisholm, for, for instance, and maybe we can get together and, and do some cooperative maintenance in Kitsville. Or going the other way, maybe Nashua and Kiwatin can team up with Hibbing, and we can do a little maintenance in Kelly Lake. That would be the only thing I would suggest. Right now, I think Hibbing's sharing with, and everybody's sharing amongst the range is, is an excellent idea, and I wish there was more that we could do. I'm not aware of anything else that we do. But I just think the more we do, the better it is for the city of Hibbing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Pat, same question. What city services do you understand that we currently share with neighboring communities, and what additional services might be shared, in your view?
Well, we have excellent cooperation on the police and, and fire department and ambulance, you know, as I think everybody has said already. But there's, you know, there's always options, that if you just talk to, what's our needs? What are we short on? Where do we have a problem? And you get the administrator in Hibbing talking, the administrator in Kiwatin, and, and Chisholm, and you come up, and, and St. Louis County, you come up with solutions. You know, I think it's important that, just as an example, now, just internally, in, in the town, at, we get a big storm, then we get another big storm. That's when we have, have to have an emergency called by the mayor and help window the snow, plow the snow, and use the, the, the truck drivers, the, every plow we have, the garbage department to haul the, the snow away at nighttime, go out at 1:00. Don't wait till, till 3:00 to go out and stay out, because there's no traffic out there. And so, and even getting any equipment from the cemetery or the memorial building. Everybody can do something in an emergency, and it doesn't cost any, any more money. So it's utilizing that kind of thinking. Thank you.
And thank you, Pat. Justin, now it is your turn. What city services do we currently share with neighboring communities? What's your understanding of that, and what additional services might be shared, in your view?
So like everybody said, obviously, you know, the fire department and the police, a lot of overlap. So, you know, a huge thank you to all the neighboring communities for, for coming here. I always appreciate when you see everybody's joining in, and that's how you build a strong community. So that, you know, that's obviously the, the one that we always share in. But I think, you know, there is some opportunity, you know, like, if you go in on things with other communities, to maybe get a better rate, right? So when it comes to, you know, we always have some maintenance that we do locally, but not all the maintenance can be done. Well, maybe, maybe as a community, for the Central Iron Range, what we could do is really focus on strategic professional trainings to, to up gauge our citizens, or up gauge our employees, where we don't have to send work out. So if we could partner with other cities and just come up with a plan, things like street sweeping, right? So when we want to buy a new street sweeper, they're really expensive. Well, if we can partner and share the costs, well, then maybe we can, you know, set aside, we can buy a new street sweeper, and then cover the, cover Chisholm streets and our streets as we combine our, our revenues. Street repairs can do the same thing. So I, I think there's a lot of opportunities to look at. It would be a little difficult to get all those things running, but I think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you. Well, that is it for the questions. So what remains are three minutes you have for a closing statement, which is up to you, what you talk about during that time. And we're all the way around, so James, you will start with three minutes for a closing statement.
Thank you. I just want to take the first few seconds to thank the chamber for putting this on, and to thank you, Pastor Dan and Mr. Potts for, for being here. Also to H-Pat for recording this and getting it out to the public. I think it's really important that people get to see and hear what we have to say, and they don't have to come and sit here with us, and they can do it from home. And also, the, the fellow candidates up here, this is, this is extremely nerve wracking sometimes, but it's nice to get up here and get this off your chest and let people know what you care about. And I, I've really enjoyed the time up here, and you guys do a really good job. My selfish three minutes is gonna be, you know, I really enjoy being a part of the council. I got elected in 2018, there was kind of a, an evolution of the council makeup, they, they changed terms and, and wards, and it was, it was kind of a, kind of an event, and I feel honored to be a part of that. I think we've done some really good things, and I think that the council has really good plans moving forward, and I just really hope I get to be a part of it. Aside from being on the council, I, I really feel that my biggest passion, or my biggest impact has been with Mr. Garrity, actually, on the, on the Public Utilities Commission. I think we're moving forward with that utility in a really unique way, and there's, and there's more to come. So I think Hibbing is actually on a really good path forward, and I just really hope that people at home, you know, want me to be involved. Again, I just want to say thank you to everybody involved, and, and I hope everybody, everybody here enjoyed their time and has a good election.
Thank you, James. Steve, your closing statement?
I too would like to thank the Hibbing Chamber of Commerce, the commentators, Pastor Dan, and Mr. Potts, H-Pat, the viewers, of course, and all the candidates. It's an honor to be up here with you guys. I was asked once, or twice, or maybe a thousand times, why I decided to run. Not exactly the question was asked that way, but that's what it turned out to be. And I tell them the best, the best answer I have is, because I believe in Hibbing. I believe, I believe in its residents, and I believe in its future. And I think the Hibbing Council currently is doing a great job getting things done in a proper manner. I want the voters to be able to contact myself or any counselor and express themselves to us. We want to be your voice. We want to, we want to bring your voice to the council. We're all open-minded, we're all reliable, we're all trustworthy people. We're not afraid to voice your opinion as well as ours. We will be your voice. I've enjoyed my six months on the council. I was appointed, as I said. I would like to continue to be on the, on the council, and mainly because I want to be your voice. I believe in Hibbing, and I believe- I believe in Hibbing and I believe in you and I, and I want to be the voice of your, of your concerns. So please vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Pat, your three minute closing statement.
Okay, I'd just like to thank the chamber for having us tonight and you gentlemen for giving the questions and taking your time. But, you know, I'd, I'd like to, to point out, you know, I, I was the, the court treasurer for, for several decades and, you know, I left voluntarily four years ago to continue working on Hibbing Public Utilities negotiations with the MPNL. We had a terrible contract with them and it took a couple of years, believe it or not. It really did, a very tough negotiating. And I guess I'm proud at this point that I got to be the leader, but it was the entire commission that backed us. And we got an excellent contract that helped Hibbing for the next 50 years, using renewable energy as the number one fuel and helping soften the rate increases created by gas or by fires and, and out west and by wars and foreign, you know, activity. So anyway, it's, Hibbing PUC is on a new step to the future and it's, it's one I'm very proud of and I think the people and Mr. Bayless is on there, everybody, you know, should understand, this is for, for the whole town. There's a few other things, you know, that we talk about, you know, what should we do? I'm running at my own expense with no financial backing from anybody. My time and my money are mine and I'm not, I'm independent and I have no special interest group pushing me. I just believe that the city needs some assistance at this time. And I think I've got the, the knowledge to, to help them. And so I'm offering my, my time as a volunteer to help solve some of these problems, which we were working on. You can't force a mining company, you know, like Masavi Metallics to settle a lawsuit, but you can work with them, you can work with Cliffs to keep the mine, mining jobs here and keep them knowing the, the tac and I tax is very important, the, the, the use of tax abatement funds, the, the use of tax income and funds. I'd use any and every economic development tool possible and encourage it in order to get a new business or a current business to stay in Hibbing and, and create jobs. And so I'm, I'm offering with no ill will, I'm, I'm offering my services to help and if the people want me, I'll be here. If they don't, I won't. Well, I hope I stay on the PUC though, but that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Justin, your three minute closing statement.
Thank you. Like everyone else, I really want to thank the chamber for putting on this event. They do such an amazing job year over year, whether it's the primaries or the final vote here. So just a big thank to, thank you guys for the government organization that puts together. So also for H-Pat, thank you for broadcasting this, getting the message out. I think that's super important for, for our residents to see as well. You know, I just really have enjoyed the last four years on the city council and I think that I've truly made a difference in the city. Some of the projects that I, that I focused on are things like the junior city council and bringing the youth into the community. And just, you know, working with different small groups like, you know, the bird watching group out at Kerry Lake and really getting a bird station and photography area set up that puts a little dot on the map that helps make us a destination city or working with the RC track club, you know, to get an RC track on a park that was being underutilized. And it's really the, you know, the, the only RC car track on the Iron Range. So it's drawing people in and draws people in from Proctor on race night. So I think, you know, those type of things are truly, truly important to me. And then as a bigger picture, you know, working on things like the Kerry Lake campground, you know, creating a family recreation area that really draws people in. So when people come, come to the city and they're looking for a place to stay, we have a campground. You know, those are projects that I, I really see as super important and wanting to move forward on. But for me, you know, my goal is always to increase community involvement, create activities for our city residents, foster job growth and really just meet the needs of the residents. And I think, you know, my, my community focus, I think, really makes me the ideal candidate for this position. I just work with the other, work with groups out there and just try to make a difference. So, thank you.
Thank you, Justin. And Chris, your three minute closing statement.
Thanks to you guys for putting all this on, the chamber and Public Access and you and Steve for all the great questions. I, like I said earlier, I don't have an axe to grind, I don't have anything against anybody up here, certainly not Steve, running against each other. We both applied to be for this position. They went with Steve, which is great and I got nothing against Steve or anybody else up here. I just think I can, I have something to bring to table and that's why I applied back in February. And especially in the last six years when I was the, as the chief in Kiwan, what community action involvement can get done. It's when, my slogan is, we could move Hibbing forward together. It's amazing what can be accomplished when we all work together. I mean, I lived here most of my life and it kind of makes me a little sad to see the decline in Hibbing and what used to be the hub of the Iron Range and a place to be, the place to go and a place to shop. And we've kind of fallen by the wayside in the last couple of decades. I want to change that and we got to adapt and I want to work with other groups, the, the chamber, development, HITA and everybody, Parks and Rec and my, my eight and seven year old kids. I want them to enjoy and not, enjoy their childhood like I did in Hibbing and not be chomping at the bit to get out of here once they graduate. I mean, and I want people that do graduate college to come here and people that went here to stay here. And to do that, we got to offer them something. We got to sell our city as something good, something beautiful. It's starting to happen. I have ideas, I have ambition and I want to be a, a part of that. I'd love to see Hibbing Tac run for another 200 years, but we got to rely on something else and to keep the city afloat. Smaller Iron Range communities have died off when mines closed and I, God forbid that ever happens. We got to keep Hibbing Tac up and running as long as we can, but we need, we need something else and we got to bring it here and we got to do it now. We got to develop our area, we got to make it a tourist destination. Justin hit on the campground, I think Kerry Lake can be expanded and just a lot more things to offer, places to stay, things to do and good paying jobs to work at. And I think if we all work together, whoever's on this council, whether it's me, Steve or any of you guys, I think we can get it done. We just, politics these days is too much fighting and not enough doing. And I, I think we're on the right direction here if whoever gets in, but I would be honored to be selected, so thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you, gentlemen. I would say on behalf of Steve and myself, we, we consider it a privilege and an honor to be able to moderate these forums because they're a part of a way of serving our community. We want to say thank you again to Hibbing Public Access Television. None of you would be watching this if they weren't taking the time to record and broadcast this. Thank you to Shelley Hansen, the president of the Hibbing Area, I almost said Chisholm, Hibbing Area Chamber of Commerce. She is outstanding at getting the details, getting the organization done. Thank you, gentlemen, each of you for coming and being part of this. Thank you for those of you who are watching, especially if you're still watching when I'm talking, over an hour and a half later. You're doing your best to be an informed voter, which is a huge part of keeping democracy and representative government at a high quality. And so we surely appreciate those of you who have taken time to watch this forum tonight. Good night, have a great evening.